I was convinced. I'm like, yeah.
You're quiet.
Yeah.
Well, you did it, Ken. But we'll call this meeting of the Norwalk City Council to order. Uh, Kaylin, would you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Brown. Cool.
Here.
Livingston. Minneke.
Here.
Mayor Phillips.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the place? So the good news is the mayor's out tonight enjoying himself. Bad news is he isn't here. So we'll, uh, we'll try to move this along. Okay, I would ask for approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to move any of the other consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Uh, if not, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, good job. Okay, moved and seconded and you, hey, it's councilmember Brown. Let the record reflect that councilman Brown is here.
Yes.
All right. Good, okay, so been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 And all opposed. Okay, so that has passed. Like to welcome the guests for public comments and I remind you that there's a three lim- time, time limit on it. And, uh, also the council can't take any action, uh, since they aren't on the agenda. But if you'd like to make a comment about any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time and, uh, would anyone like to, uh, talk? Okay, not having anyone, we'll just move right along. The consent agenda, uh, it's been reviewed and, uh, I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Minneke and seconded by Baker. Uh, let's see, there's a roll call vote here.
Yep.
Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, now we're on to old and new business. Uh, we have a discussion now regarding, uh, residents proposals for Falcon Parkland. Uh, that's a three acre park, Falcon Park, and it's located in the center of Brody's Landing Development, uh, down in the southeast part of our community. The city was recently approached by several residents along, uh, Kitzel Drive, requiring about acquiring land, um, as part of that park project, and I wonder, Luke, I believe you get to address that.
I'd be happy to, so give you a little bit more history back here. Um, again Falcon Park, uh, it's over in the Brody's Landing Development. It's kind of in the center of that development, was, uh, considered for the parkland for the whole area. Um, and it's kind of an odd shape. Um, the diagram I put in your packet kind of shows how it's broken up into a couple of different areas. On the west side is a larger usable piece of park. Uh, there's kind of a drainage corridor that runs down the center of it that then splits the, uh, eastern side, uh, which is a little less usable for traditional park purposes. Um, the concept when we went through the, uh, initial development phases was that maybe someday the city could run, uh, path along there to provide, uh, pedestrian and bike path from Jacobin Drive up to Sandpiper Drive. Um, so as that's kind of going on, that parkland got finalized, we accepted it. It's never really been in the greatest condition that we wanted it to. It was one of those ones that we struggled with early on as we were figuring out our parkland, uh, acceptance requirements, um, which we've gotten locked down a lot better, uh, going forward, but nonetheless, this situation exists here. So as those homes have built out, the residents along Kitzel Drive, um, approached the city with the idea that, um, you know, they might like to take over parts of that area, um, to be able to maintain it better to their standards rather than, uh, how the city has kind of maintained it more as a drainage corridor, um, since it's not an active park at this time. Um, on the second page, there is another diagram that, uh, is really rough. This isn't meant to represent what the residents are proposing, just to kind of show the concept of the idea that basically we'd be talking about somehow, extending those backyards into that parkland area. Um, I met with them a couple of weeks ago out in the neighborhood, um, and talked through some things with them, gave them some of my opinions about it, um, but really just recommended that before we take too many more steps, that they should really come talk to you all and get some council direction before we spend a lot more time on it. So they spent some time putting together some, um, information that I'll present to you all. Um, I'm just really kind of here to shepherd that to you all and happy to continue working on it at your direction. That's really from a staff perspective, what we're looking for out of this is what you would like us to do, uh, going forward. Um, just one more, I guess data points that I kind of threw together. I did work with Gene and the county assessor just to try to understand the value of that from a, you know, if it becomes land, it's now part of their lot and there's taxable value for that. So that represents, we guessed about a, well, not guessed, but did some calculations, you know, it's not always going to be the same, but about a thousand dollars in tax revenue annually if all of that land went over into private property. So, uh, that's something to consider, um, going forward. Obviously there's maintenance costs and all that as well if we continue to own it. So with that, we've got representatives from the neighborhood here, I'll turn it over to them.
All right.
Happy to answer any questions when we go forward.
Come up and speak, uh, give us your name, address. You want to comment, ma'am? Did I get your name and address? Well, all right.
This would bring, um, as Luke showed me, your Parks and Rec budget has been cut by seventy-five grand. And the revenue alone on these homes would be over a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So we think it's a fair trade. Plus, um, I did do quotes for the beautification just to get the property up to maintenance, which is why we offered the price we did. On an average quote, um, most landscaping companies to come and till and seed will either charge by the square footage or by the hour. So you're looking between two to three grand per home for us to get it at least right now.
Ed, I've got a few things to add.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind. Accurate statements, thank you for mentioning that. The seventy-five thousand specifically, uh, was a request from Parks and Rec Dakota. Took me out to several parks, this is one of them that he drove me through and showed me specifically, and this was, I would say almost a year ago that I did a tour and saw what improvements need to be. We put seventy-five thousand in our CIP, the work to happen in, uh, this upcoming fiscal year. So if this were to take place, essentially that seventy-five thousand expenditure we had planned for this park could be repurposed somewhere else. Because if this became private property, usually we get requests like this from property owners that, I'm not going to say it's regular, but it's not uncommon. But in this situation, because of the condition of that location, and it has very little purpose for actual park use, I kind of raised my eyebrows. I said, this is interesting. I went to all of our department heads specifically looking to Parks and Rec, and even they looked at it and said, there's really more of a financial burden on the city right now than what there's value to the Parks Department. So even their viewpoint was they were open to the idea. So that's what gained enough traction. I apologize, I couldn't be at the meeting that day and, uh, Harris was, uh, there in my place, thanks for doing that. Um, so all of that really kind of lined up with, um, from a staff perspective and the property owners thinking, this might be a win-win on both sides. But just as Luke said, before we take additional steps, whether we need to do an appraisal or considers, um, the offer, so seven hundred dollars per lot is what you're talking about?
Seven hundred dollars per lot to allow the homeowners to transfer property. And then it would also be a financial burden upon us to actually get the property up to, which is why we offered what we did.
And that's also saying that the four biggest lots, which would be the first four that you see there would be paying the most. And then obviously it would settle down because it's, it would be fair for like the last lot that only maybe going to get a, you know, a couple feet. Having them pay seven hundred like what we're paying doesn't really make sense, but you know, still putting something forward.
We would rather sac- make sacrifices as the majority to benefit the majority.
One, one of the challenges, I think, with your concept is that have a required cooperation by everybody there.
Yes, we have already spoken.
Because we couldn't really have a piece that's cut off in isolation.
Yes, with that one's explained, uh, very in depth by Luke. And we made sure, um, we have confirmed the four largest lots who are the ones that would be gaining the most property. We are all in to get that started. The smaller lots, um, some of them, their English is not the best, but we have communicated it with them and they consider depending on what we decided.
I think I know the answer.
Get some comments here from the council?
I think I know the answer, but all the houses are built, because I'm just seeing the three or four.
So if looking at this particular map, the, um, large property on the very, very corner has been designated for a property, but nothing has been built. We actually don't know if anyone will be built there. All of the properties have since been built except for the bottom two quarters. Those ones are still threatening destruction.
Oh, those are where that bottom.
Where the bottom two are, um, one of them is almost finished, the next one, the foundation has been bored.
Okay, so right now they're not occupied because they're still.
No, they're not occupied because there's no. However, every other property is fully built and there are several different families.
So the ones that are in construction, they, who owns?
GR force.
GR force. They've, they've built.
They would pay the seven hundred dollars in theory to?
In theory, yes, when we originally went to purchase the home, we were actually advertised with the property that you see. Um, that's how we ended up purchasing the home, and it wasn't until we were ten days from moving in that we were told, oh yeah, your lot is twenty feet wide.
We find that's more preco.
Yeah.
Disappointing, so.
Yeah, we've noticed that too, because we've discussed it with several people who have bought.
Other bill.
Right.
Oh, no, we, uh, because we were one of the top ones in the city, so we were curious if we were just a special case or it would come.
We would have the park on the other side that's existing?
Yes, the park would be, from what we've been told, would be on the other side of the property. It is very luscious grassland, which actually currently has some wonderful peasants looking at this beautiful.
Oh, cool project, sure. Wait, isn't that?
Park project to continue just on that side. We would like to take over this small part that we know is technically not really useful to the city, and it just causes you guys a financial burden more than anything else. Plus, I am more than happy to fight with anybody if someone doesn't know that thing.
Luke, is that sidewalk or whatever it is to the north, is that a bike trail or a sidewalk?
Uh, that right now is just a five foot walk. It was just when, uh, developers have park frontage or other non-lot frontage, we require them to pay. You can see actually there's a paved thing on the south side of that as well, um, on Jacobin, there's a small jump. But yeah, those are just sidewalks right now.
So where would the nearest bike trail?
I think in our planning, uh, whenever we would redo East Twenty-Seventh to a modern cross-section, I think our trail plan says something along that, but nothing that's currently existing. Yeah, uh, uh, R fifty-seven.
The original looks a lot different than what Zach built. Original concept, they brought it. Their concept for the plan. It looks, it looks a little different than how it turned out in the end.
Well, from a, from a dimensional standpoint, it meant that, but from the expectations of what park ground we felt we should have gotten versus what condition it was turned over to us, there was in kind of greedy too.
I guess I have a question, we're, we're assuming that Park and Rec wouldn't necessarily have a useful purpose for that ground. Is that a valid assumption on our part?
Yeah, so we didn't have anything specifically designed for that small triangled piece on the east side of the drainage area, um, per se, as of right, you know, this moment.
Okay, and the other piece that's over there to the west, that's pretty developable for a park, I mean.
A and B, yep, yep, so right now it's still just the green space, um, you know, open until we figure out exactly what direction we want to use that.
I suspect you're probably considering that as maybe a neighborhood park that being, am I right on that or?
Yeah, so again, those are in future discussions of trying to figure out exactly, you know, what we want to use each section of land for.
So if we do this plan, it looks like it makes, if you wanted to put a trail, you put it on that green line on the west. That would lead it right into the park.
Yeah, the, the green western line is on another development property. Uh, we had a site plan that was approved for that probably six years ago, it's no longer valid. Um, if, when that comes back forward, a thing that's in the back of my mind will be a discussion of should we require them to put a trail through there as part of their site, just so that we get access up there, which seems reasonable to me from a, uh, you know, that site developing.
So in this concept, would we still be owning the property that has, uh, water drain near it?
That, that I don't, we talked a couple of different ways that property lines could be. I've left it to them, I don't know exactly what you're proposing here. What I showed there was it just encompassing the whole thing, but, uh.
Decision on that, um, between the homeowners, we would like to be at least, uh, three feet off of the drainage ditch. We have no problem maintaining it, um, on that side, it would just be where our property line is at the bench to make sure that there is no damage if there is a increase.
Okay, so you, you don't have an interest in trying to acquire the ground with the drainage yet?
No, sir.
Quite smart.
Thought it through a little bit.
You need this drainage ditch like that, what we talked about last week, where was the under your floodplain and?
Yeah, I mean, that's one thing that I, and I communicate with them, that, you know, it is important to take a step back from just their street and understand that, yeah, that backyard, um, I, I provide them the plat that shows how the, there's a drainage easement through there that is a little bit wider than even that three foot, so there is the possibility in a mega flood situation, bad scenario. I mean, everybody's going crazy because the road above it is flooded, it floods all through there, but that's how it's designed to, so.
That gentleman last week was wanting to put trees out there and we said, no.
It's, that's a little bit different scenario because it's more, uh, overflow rather than a detention area, yeah.
So trees are there.
Yeah.
Well, you can also plant native grasses around that, uh, drain line will strengthen the riverbed as well as help with the additional water.
Question clarification. So on this map.
Yes, sir.
That was drawn up, it shows those property lines going all the way to the center line of that ditch.
Yes.
And so is this an act, what's on, uh?
That is purely me throwing something together so that we had a visual representation of lots would extend to the west.
But is this, um, but are you saying you're, you're not proposing that this is where the property lines would go?
Not to the center of the ditch. We're saying at least like three feet off, just so that like.
Number one, it remains in a straight line, number two, it makes it a little bit easier for guys.
Cause you're probably out of floodplain right now, you don't need to stand doing into a floodplain. If you don't have it in there, it'd be a.
Uh, official floodplain designation, I don't think there's any.
No.
One there even with the drainage.
There's a hundred year forward or when it's not a FEMA floodplain.
Right. It's just. So it's not like there'd be flood insurance or anything like that. The reason I bring that up is, um, feel like that's an impact if, because if the city continues to own and maintain a small sliver of property, that, to me, that's a concern. I mean, part of the value of doing this is to have that flow easement, have that go with the property. Otherwise, that's even a more difficult maintenance thing for the city to have that small sliver.
And that's just as far as we're concerned.
Yeah, we were just, we were just kind of coming up saying, we were trying to think, you know, this much and kind of just bring it up in front and then kind of see where it went. And like if we have to go a little bit further, we have, you know, we're not, we're not going to be like, not, nevermind, we're going to go home because we have, you know, because there's that little bit extra.
Oh no, you give me a drainage ditch, I can construct a vehicle as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, and there would still have to be drainage easements along there, blow easement. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I've, uh, I talked to Ed today and he made me think of that remaining portion, it's about one point four, one point five acres that's left over on that upper portion. So I just did a, a calculation, this is Warrior Park over in the Orchard Hills area. That area that I highlighted in red is approximately one point five acres. So if you're wondering what could be built out in that area, essentially shelter, a bathroom, a parking lot, two different, a young children's playground, older children's playground.
Or one big piece.
Or one big piece that would fit within that area if you're just trying to conceptualize the amount of area. In other words, if this goes through, we still end up with a sizable parkland for some future development.
Yeah, that's probably easier to maintain. I mean, we, we gave you such a big budget anyway.
Yeah, appreciate it. Uh, our, just kind of our, our one main concern is that drainage area, there, there still are issues within that that are going to need fixed or, or reassessed, um, to, to make sure that everything is, 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 you know, the way it's supposed to be in that area. So that's what we were just looking to see how far, um, the residents were wanting to go against that drainage area, because with that, you know, we want to make sure that we're keeping to, to the highest standards for that drainage issue. Um, what happens if, you know, something down the, down the, down the line, you know, we've, we've got to get back into that area and redo something else again. Is that, is that strictly on the city's dime, is that on the residents' dime? We want to make sure there is a clear cut.
Yeah, we have to have some.
Right, um, with, with that area. So that's just our kind of two cents from Parks and Recreation.
Got to wash his flower bed.
Anyway, playing me, I guess. Take, take, take the whole thing.
It sounds really well thought out, I like it.
Well, that's good, I'm glad you liked it.
That's pretty good. It's pretty positive.
Didn't really, you liked it from the beginning. Good. Good, George.
Good. There'll probably be some surveying, plating expenses that go along with that. We're going to be amending the plat and that throughout the lots and, um, so.
But I don't think the city, I don't think the city should lose money on the deal. I mean, that'd be my advice to.
Sure.
Sam. Is this, is this legal?
Legal, certainly.
All right, well, I just want to chat, right? That's, that's the learning council point.
Council wants to do it.
In a public session.
So I think we've got enough head nods that we'll continue to negotiate with them. We'll see if we can come to some kind of conclusion and bring back something more formal that will allow us to start the actual.
Details of.
I think, I think the true conditions I'd like to, and as a council, I'd like to make clear for the staff to consider, right? The city doesn't lose money on the. Uh, we make sure that all that property is acquired, that we don't leave any little pieces sitting there, right? And that there's a clear resolution as to that, uh, drainage.
Sure.
The easement for the drainage.
Yes, yes.
Cause that can go forward a hundred years from now.
Yeah, everybody will be sitting around saying, well. We do that sometimes now and stuff in the past.
It happened sixty years ago, we had no idea why.
Okay, well, that give you enough to work with?
It certainly does.
All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate your time and your entrance.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now I know where that street is too.
It's a sweatzel.
It is, it's right there, it's a sweatzel, and it's apparently a bird from South Africa. All of the streets in that area are actually named after birds.
Hey, we don't want to run those pheasant talk.
Right.
Next item, there's a consideration of a resolution that approves the site plan for Callaway. And, uh, it's a site plan amendment related to the southernmost county units at Callaway. The original site plan consisted of a three ten unit building, and the proposal is to change those to five, six unit buildings. So Luke, I understand your knowledgeableness, so.
That I am, yeah, uh, it's really as simple as you made it sound, Ed. Uh, there were three ten unit buildings, uh, in the initial plans, um, as we've gotten into some more detailed designs on the building and fire side, um, realized that there were some fire requirements that they were running into with the ten in a row due to the overall square footage of the building. So this keeps the same number of units, just splits them up amongst more buildings so that they fall under a lesser requirement, uh, makes the construction go a little smoother. So yeah, that's simple.
Do you have any comment at all on?
Uh, no, internally staff between us and buildings, and, uh, with the developers, we worked through this pretty thoroughly, so we'll talk to that at the time.
Right, you all have their own decks and stuff like that?
Decks?
I mean, the, our usual requirements.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, not.
Yes, yeah.
Hey, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this topic? Um, any council discussion, other questions?
Make a motion.
Have a motion? Do I get a sec? That's a motion by Minneke and a, and a second by Brown. Right, that's good, that's great. Okay, with the, uh, please call the roll.
Uh, councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
I just, yeah, that motion has passed. Now we have a resolution approving the site plan of Culvers in Norwalk. Well, I've heard a lot about his Culvers coming. It looks like Norwalk is fortunate to be seeing construction of a new Culvers. This item is a request for the approval of a full grid site plan on the west side of Hughes Drive, on the east side of Highway twenty-eight between Gordon and I Road. And we recently discussed a hyper energy building just to the south. Luke, evidently you have some comments on this one.
I do too, um, if you go to probably page nine is probably the best one that gives kind of overall thing. Um, so first we'll start off location wise, uh, we are west of Hughes Drive, east of, uh, Sunset, um, sandwiched between the Gordon Retail. um sandwiched between the Gordon retail building to the north with the subway and the Harris Salon and all of that. And then the Hyper Energy Bar, we just approved a few meetings ago to the south. Um, you can see they've they've ghosted on that Hyper Energy Bar site plan there. Um, so that really helps understand how the driveways and everything interact with each other. Um, they will be sharing the driveway on to Hughes Drive on the south with uh the Hyper Energy Bar site and to the north, they are connecting into and actually requiring some easement rights into the uh Gordon Retail Building to connect to their parking lot and their drive and provide access onto Hughes Drive from their lot. Um, so good that we're uh able to use those existing drive accesses and kind of keep our goal of limiting drive access to Hughes Drive as much as possible. Um, another auto centric uh user here on Hughes Drive, so uh just as last time we talked about pedestrian safety concerns and things the city could do pedestrian wise and safety wise. Um, you know, we still agree to take a wait and see approach, but as we have these auto centric users show up in that area, we're gonna have that conflict between the people walking and the people driving. So something to keep an eye on. Um, so as a drive through user, uh, they've got kind of a double drive through order area um that next down to a single lane for pickup. Uh, they've got a couple uh areas for um order to wait for your order to be picked up or online orders. Um, if you've been to a Culvers lately, you know, they tend to get you through the driveway pretty quick and then uh go and wait for your food. Um. So one of the waivers that they do, they have two waivers uh asking for with the site plan. Uh, one is related to drive through size. Um, their order windows, which are kind of the um, the two cars that are right south of that patio area. Um, those, uh, our code says that you have to have five cars behind that order window. And in each order window there, they have three cars that can stack behind it. So their first request waiver wise for parking requirements is to be allowed to have those three cars waiting instead of the five. Um, one thing of note, because they have two pickup windows, they technically have an area for six cars to wait, but it's just across two order windows instead of one. So staff perspective, we don't have a whole lot of concern with that. We also know that there's times where there'll be cars backed up to a couple of those parking spots and likely uh block some of those. It's just how the world works. People figure it out, so we're not too concerned about that. Um, the other thing is to reduce the parking setback um to five feet on the western side, really the northwestern side of the uh lot. You can see how the the lot kind of has a funky jog up at the top in the northwestern corner. And then with Highway twenty eight doing a splashing diagonal through there, it creates some weirdness with the fifteen foot setback that we require um for a parking setback. Um, so you can see there that corner, uh the far northwest corner of the parking lot uh goes over that parking setback a little bit. Um, but again, staff didn't have a concern with that happening um given the geometry of Highway twenty eight and the limited area that that uh approaches into. So those would be the two uh waiver requests and parking requirements. Um, other than that, the site meets the rest of our requirements. Uh, architectural elevation sound a little earlier like most Culvers buildings and meet our code requirements for brick and stone and glass and yeah, happy to answer any other questions.
Interesting driveway. Different.
Yeah, P and Z had a really good discussion on this.
Yeah, with the other, with the other one, they had a. Would would anyone, is anyone here to speak to this in the audience?
Your name and address. Sure, yeah. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Brad Key with Bishop Engineering here tonight representing the Culvers folks. Uh, very happy to be here. They've looked at several sites over the last four years. Happy to finally have something and bring you a site plan tonight. So they're anxious to get going. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, all right. Uh, does anyone have any questions for the?
That's what they're hoping, that's what they're hoping for.
I've had so many people ask me, when's Culvers coming? So that's good, that's good. No, I I think you'd be a really good addition to our community, obviously. I guess offhand, you know, I can't think of any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward.
I'll make motion.
Second. Okay, so motion by Minneke, seconded by Baker. Uh, would you call the roll?
Council member Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, welcome to Norwalk. All right, pretty cool. Any of us hold it? Yeah, hey, my wife, she likes that. Let's see. We have a resolution here. We're looking at to approve the site plan for the main street school. And it's a request for a site plan amendment for the improvements of the main street school. And it includes a gazebo and landscaping changes, retaining wall, uh, and the paving of the driveways through the property. Luke, do you have any more details to add on this?
Sure, yeah. The main thing we're really looking at here um is the gazebo location from a site plan perspective. Uh, most of these other things are improvements to stuff that's already um there. The pink driveway is a current gravel drive that they're um going to hard surface. So our code says we tend to want things to be hard surface, so that's a good improvement. Um, but the gazebo location uh being a structure, um we have to have a site plan that shows where it's at. It's in a residential district, but it's a non-residential user. Um, so we wanted to bring it through uh just to follow that requirement and get a thumbs up from it. Um, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions with the council? Do we have anyone here to speak to this in the audience? Yes, sir. Your name and address?
Good evening, Ed Orger. I live at ten twenty-three South Tenth Street in Adele and the president of Mackinich Corporation. We're supporting this project, you know, financially and like Dwayne had done in the past, you know, with the sports complex and Doug wants to give back to the community, so we're here to support the school, to improve their exterior amenities for the kids and and be, you know, the financial backing to get this project done. So that's my position in the project.
Yep.
Tonya, you've talked.
Tonya Pana, eight nineteen Wright Road, uh forever resident of Norwalk. Been and on this property, we're entering our twentieth year. Um, and it's fabulous. It's great. We love what we're doing there. Um, from the outside, it needs improvements. And so we were really happy to have some support from Mackinich Corporation to help us envision what the improvements could look like. And so we're really trying to make it so we're not an eyesore. Um, so we have a more professional look to us. Um, there are some issues in the back, such as the gravel drive and and some of the the retaining wall, which will really just um help our our playground um area become much more functional.
Well, we appreciate you being in our community and been a real asset for the community. I remember visiting your school a few years ago and a few short years ago when I was.
Yeah, probably about nineteen eighty.
I do appreciate the support, financial support.
Mackinich should always support it.
Great, and if you want to help out with anything else, well, welcome that. Any questions the council might have for the presenter?
Take the motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Minneke made the motion, Baker made the second. Got to get on the stick a little bit, get to a second. Okay, would you call a roll, please?
Uh, council member Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Hey, Ed, can I say one thing?
Sure.
As I point out that they did lose Dwayne Mackinich here a couple of months ago. And he was always a long-term citizen supporter of Norwalk and everything. And it shouldn't go and recognize that they had that loss because he was he was a stalwart of the community for a long time.
Yeah, thank you. No, I I remember having a lot of personal contact. I need a lot of good things.
Yeah.
Particularly as sports guy.
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate we lost Dwayne. And then uh a few weeks later, we lost his sister-in-law Beth. He was married to George Mackinich here town. And then uh, six days after Dwayne Glennis's memorial, he lost his last sister, Marilyn Hope, so.
Wow.
Two sister, sister-in-law, two sister-in-laws, basically, or a sister, a sister-in-law himself in about a month and a half. So that generation unfortunately is gone. So I appreciate that. I'll take your thoughts and condolences back to Doug because you know.
Yes, yeah, let him, let him know how much we appreciate it. That family particularly in the community, but particularly him.
Famous saying.
He was a good character. I remember talking to him and uh, sometimes he could be a little entertaining.
It's the right thing. I mean, he'd use that all the time. He'd come up with something and he'd say, why are we doing this way? It's the right thing to do. This is the right thing to do, so.
There you go. Well, thank you again.
Right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, now we're looking at uh a site plan here of Michael Foods for a pump house and water tank. And the item is a site plan amendment to the Michael Foods site related to the construction of an accessory pump house and water tank with the main building. Luke, would you please give us some insight on?
Yep, so uh north side of the Michael Foods uh facility, they are proposing building a uh concrete drive back to a pump house facility and then some tanks and a larger water tank. Um, so this site plan is to locate that. Um, they are considered accessory uses to the facility um of the major Michael, the main Michael Foods plant. Um, so we still have to meet setbacks and everything. It meets that. The water tank uh is forty-five feet tall, so uh we are currently working with our board of adjustment to get that scheduled as well because they need a special use permit issued to have the tank that size. Um, but in the meantime, we wanted to bring you through council as well um to get the locations sorted out and let them start with any work they need to on the pump house and driveway stuff um while we take that water tank through um our board of adjustment. Um, I don't anticipate any hiccups with that. The main building itself is over forty-five feet tall. It's just a nuance of our code that says accessory structures can't exceed fifteen feet without a special use permit. So we'll take them through that.
Tank probably means more business, I would imagine. Any questions with the council? Okay, well, it's pretty straightforward to me. I don't have any other questions. Gonna get a motion. Okay, so Baker motioned it.
Second.
Hey, Brown seconded. There we go. All right, would you please call the roll?
Council member Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Good, that resolution is fast. The next revolution, resolution is about sharing a parking lot and utility maintenance agreement up at the Sportsplex. And just in the way of uh looking backward here, the city and the Sportsplex jointly funded the original construction, the parking lot. This serves a field house and the Sportsplex properties. This agreement would formalize the long-term responsibilities as well as provide a limited number of designated parking stalls for exclusive use. And Jim, I believe our learned counsel here has some remarks on that.
Okay, well, I guess uh, yeah, the agreement, it's been contemplated since we entered into the original construction agreement. If you remember, the city council approved a shared parking lot and we shared expenses on that. And that was on a seventy-four percent, twenty-six percent basis where the city would pay seventy-four percent of the uh construction and Sportsplex took on twenty-six percent. So what this agreement, which had been contemplated since time we entered into that agreement, it allocates uh with that same percentage amount, the maintenance that's going forward. So you're talking maintenance of lights, you're talking clearing of uh snow, you're talking uh if you if you have to paint, repaint the the parking lot, just any any maintenance items to be split uh split with that percentage. Like, and like uh Ed said, it will be, it does designate, there's a map on there or an attachment on there that kind of shows some designated parking spaces. Luke has that up on the uh on on the computer right now showing where they are. Those orange ones are gonna be uh reserved parking spots for the businesses that are in Sportsplex. So Mullet's, uh, Pen High Golf. The and and Sportsplex is gonna be responsible for allocating those between their renters and technically those are the tenants, so they'll allocate it from there.
Marking them then? They're gonna take care of it?
Yep, they will mark them and put signs on there. Uh, that's reserved for uh those specific locations. And I think that's about it unless you have any other questions.
If the handicap stalls will stay.
Yes, yep. We talked about moving them around a little bit, but after researching on how that was determined and uh it was engineered part of the original site plan and there's a lot of ADA requirements, we felt it best to keep it where it is.
Yeah, it would be useful for them to.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
It's a forever agreement though.
Yes, yeah.
And I do want to clarify, the reason I'm showing this specifically on the screen, this is a revised exhibit E within the agreement. So if there's a motion and second to approve the agreement, if you could just reflect that it's this modified exhibit E.
And when you did, yes, regarding a forever agreement, it is forever except for there's provisions in there for modifications because when that lot four that you see off in the uh top uh northeast corner, that's an empty lot right? Okay, and at the time that uh business locates there, uh depending on what the business is and how much parking they take, uh they will then start participating in the maintenance of the parking also. And then the city's obligation and Sportsplex's obligation will then be reduced proportionally uh based upon the number of lots uh that are required regarding that.
So you're talking about the city's obligation?
Yeah, because right, right now we're splitting the cost of the maintenance for this for two people, two businesses.
Right.
Basically the city and and Sportsplex. Well, if there's a third one there, well, they're they're gonna start participating too, so that necessarily will reduce the amount paid for by the city and Sportsplex.
Sounds good.
That's a real wild question or scenario by you, just for entertainment, because we're a little pretty quick. What if we came into a lot of money for whatever reason and decided to put a parking ramp there? How would this affect?
We would have to probab, we would have to renegotiate at that point in time, because you'd have so many more parking stalls there. Uh, we'd probably have to look and see whether we thought.
Exactly.
We put on there based upon demand, we'd probably have all the parties that are benefiting from and causing the need for that increased parking amount to uh come to the table and figure out how that gets done.
There might be a need for parking like that up there, but it's just a question, I never know.
Yeah, never know, yep.
Where could it come from? Any other questions or comments?
And make the motion.
Oh.
Adam's got them.
Just quick question. Okay, I'd just like to run something by the council and uh, you know, take this as you will. Um, what would be your thoughts on the most northern part of the parking lot? Um, like the first four stalls, yep, like right?
See if I can draw a line, because I think I know where you're talking to me.
Okay, wherever the lines are drawn.
Yep, sorry. Uh, to get uh like signage for permanent uh city vehicle parking?
Oh, for the employees, it'll be.
Yeah, yep. So to keep our our city vehicles, um, you know, in that northern lot or that northern stalls up there.
Uh, how many, how many are you looking at? How many do you?
Four. Yeah.
Oh, so the green would be for constituents using the facility.
Yeah, yeah, so that way we keep our city vehicles
Yeah.
back tucked out of the way.
Are those lots, are those spots taken very often? I mean, on weekends they might, but you.
Yeah, on weekends and we and we were just, we just wanted to put this out there as as Pen High opens up, Mullet's opens up, um, just to designate some parking spots to keep our city vehicles, um, you know, out of the way, tucked away back in the corner.
Up is east, right?
No, up is north.
Up's north, yep.
That work with your.
Yeah, yep, right there, Luke, yep.
That's a good idea.
And then that's, I mean, that's what we did in the winter time. We tucked them there for snow removal and everything. Um, so we were just thought, you know, moving forward as businesses and the city are kind of claiming spots, what your thoughts would be about, you know?
Definitely more competition for the parking spots. Fellas have any questions or comments?
I think I'm getting straightened out.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Good.
Okay, the only contingency I'd say is that what you have sitting in front of you has been negotiated through attorneys and parties over the last couple of weeks. And this will be a change to what I know that they're gonna say okay to. Uh, I can't imagine they'd object to four spots on north. I I just, I don't see that happening, so.
The umpire's still getting sidewalked.
If we pass it with that change.
Yeah.
And you run into a problem with our agreement, um, I would imagine it would come back to us.
Yes, that's right.
For reconsideration, right?
Yes. Yes.
I don't think that would create a big issue.
Yeah, I don't see that.
But but that's a good point that it.
Yeah, we didn't want to ruffle any feathers. We just wanted to put that out there to the council to have designated spots for our vehicles out of the way.
Parking wreck people not wanting to ruffle any feathers. Okay, any any comments or questions at all there on that? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, good job. Now you are motioning.
With the uh specifically.
As a man.
Yes. With the changed exhibit E as well as the request for the four stalls at the very north end.
Yes.
Good job. Okay, Councilman Brown made the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, Baker made the second, so would you please call the roll?
Council member Cool?
Yes.
Miniki?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Look at that. You got a unanimous support on your motion.
I know.
That's resolution of approving a twenty-eight E agreement for the city of Martinsdale for mutual aid. The fire department continues to care for review services provided and compensation received from mutual aid assistance. This agreement is for Norwalk to continue to provide mutual aid assistance to Martinsdale. bunch of materials in the packet here. It appears that Martinsdale greatly reduced the amount of mutual aid response requests to the Norwalk Fire Department. Keith Porter, is this a good thing to do? And what do you have to add? You move.
Um just to give a little bit of background to the new council members, um I became the chief in twenty-twenty-one and there was a request at that time for council to reduce the amount of mutual aid that we were providing to our surrounding communities. Um that was when we were also having the discussion about the city of coming and paying a glory as our citizens for those same services. Um uh with the city of Martinsdale, we did identify again in twenty-twenty-one the utilization of our total call volume to their request was about nine point four percent of our total call volume, which we felt was too much. Um they have, they're a city, they have a staff agency, but they're relying really heavily on us for primarily the EMS responses. Um so we went to them and we um drafted a twenty-eight E agreement that we were charging them additional fee per EMS call. We did it kind of progressively, um and we ended up at over the three-year course up to two hundred dollars extra per EMS call. So we are billing those uh citizens. If we transport, we are getting the EMS revenues from them. That was a little extra fee um for us coming down there to cover those calls again because we were the primary agency. Um in that draft, we also asked for them to kind of draw some boundaries for us that we weren't going to all of their territory they responded to. We kind of um carved out just for um Jefferson Township, which is the township that Martinsdale was in. We asked them to secure mutual aid from other agencies first and call us only as a last resort. So um from twenty-twenty-one, again, utilization was about nine point point four percent and in twenty-twenty-four is down to four point nine percent. So we have seen a drastic decrease in the amount of mutual aid um that we are providing to the city of Martinsdale. Um though we think at four point five percent, it's still um effective for us to keep the fee in place. Um though I'm not suggesting an increase in the fee. Um over, we're collecting almost uh fifteen thousand dollars a year right now and those additional costs um in addition to the EMS revenue they're generating. I don't have those numbers. That'd be very difficult to break out um how much of our EMS revenues we're getting from Martinsdale residents. Um but the fees on top from this twenty-eight E agreement are about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So I'm asking to renew that contract. Um and we're gonna continue to watch that mutually to make sure that we're staying kind of in that um you know, below five percent utilization. Um as a reminder too, they do provide us mutually as well, primarily in the fires, the fires um spectrum, not necessarily in the EMS. But they do provide us a small amount of mutually back to us as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
First of all, I love Martinsdale. I'll get that on the record.
I'm sorry.
I love Martinsdale. I'll get that on the record.
Yes.
But uh I just noticed in your monthly report, it was they had eight mutual aid.
Yeah.
And then, of course, I don't expect much back, to be honest with you, but uh is that?
Yeah, I noticed that as well.
Just one month, but.
Yeah, that's just one month. We kind of watched those numbers um. For fiscal year twenty-four, we responded there sixty-five times. Uh for fiscal year twenty-five up to the end of May, it was seventy-two, so we have seen a little bit of an increase. You know, that's the world of fire and EMS. It kind of does a wax and wane a little bit. Um I did notice that that we did have that eight uh last month. And we include those mutually numbers at the request of council member Cool, so we can kind of be watching what we're giving, what we're receiving. Um and you know, sometimes we see that we are giving out to Martinsdale, but then we're receiving from West Des Moines. So that's kind of the circle of life, the way that it goes around here, so.
And we like to work with other people, but you know, it's always cheaper to use other people's stuff. So we gotta keep that in mind too.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Second.
Councilman Miniki and.
Second.
Oh, I heard a second, Councilman Brown. Very good. Please call the roll.
Council member Miniki?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes. You might as well stay there, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next item we're looking at for a resolution is a fire and emergency medical services contract. Pursuant to the Iowa Code, section twenty-eight E between Lynn Township and the city of Norwalk. Uh Norwalk currently has an agreement in place with Lynn Township to provide fire protection emergency services. The agreement is due for renewal and the staff continues to evaluate services provided outside of the corporate city limits and the compensation received to provide those services. Chief, your thoughts?
Thank you. So um again, a little bit of history uh for the new council members. Um by state code, um townships and cities alike are required to provide fire services. Um they are not required to provide EMS services. If you've seen the news here in the past few years, they've talked about it as EMS essential service. But currently today, the state for the county of Warren, there are a few counties that have adopted the EMS essential service. But um by state code, townships are required to have fire protection. Uh with that comes a max levy rate. So they are paying the max levy rate right now of the sixteen and three-quarter cents per thousand. Um we continue to evaluate other options for uh additional rates. Uh the county is also entertaining the idea of proposing the EMS essential service, which could um provide some additional funding. I don't know what that would look like. Um but there are some additional ideas out there. Um it's been on my to-do list and it's just haven't gotten to the top yet about districting and that sort of thing that could generate some additional revenues. But currently where we are today is that Lynn Township is paying the max levy rate of the sixteen and three-quarter cents per thousand. And that generates about sixty thousand dollars um back to our general fund.
My my thoughts on this before anybody else gets started. And I know you and I have discussed this type of thing for quite a while.
Yeah.
And and I appreciate the work you've accomplished on it. I just want to make sure the council understands that when we talk about the maximum levy, that means what they can raise for that purpose is limited. But it doesn't mean what they spend for that purpose. Okay, so they could bring in some general revenue funds if they wanted to. That said, I also realize that we're gonna annex a large amount for that area and it's gonna be in the city here probably before too long.
Yeah, to be clear, Lynn Township is the township that the city is mostly in. Uh from Cherry to the west is uh Greenfield.
Pick up about what half, not quite half.
Not half, but Jim, you know how much or how far we're going into the township here?
Um well, it just kind of takes a wedge out of the middle of it, kind of, because Lynn Township will extend. Uh this township extends south of the river down there. You know, up to Erby, goes on up into Erby.
Yeah, full is the southern border. And of course, you do separate out the city of coming from that as well, so it's the township minus the corporate city limits of Norwalk, corporate city limits of coming.
The ground that, of course, that we're annexing though doesn't have any residence, residents or anything like that, so.
And I did include a map in the agreement as well. If you look to your packet, kind of gives you a little better idea of what we're looking at. That's exhibit A in the agreement. And for reference too, for fiscal year twenty-four, we ran seventy-eight calls in the township. Fiscal year twenty-five up and through uh May was sixty-seven calls. When I spoke with the clerk um about this agreement, I continued to tell them like we will continue to look for additional ways to generate revenue from the township. So they're aware that we're looking for other options in the county as well. But that's where we're at today and we have a contract that's expiring, so.
So our agreement with coming is, makes it even for the citizens of Norwalk and coming.
Correct.
What's the difference between this and coming?
Max levy rates by the state, whereas the city of coming is a city, so they have different, different rules, different rates that they can pay by state code versus a township. Technically, technically, we're contracting for fire, but we know that no matter what our call volumes, typically we run about seventy-eight to eighty percent of our total call volumes are EMS. Um uh just like with Martinsdale, we are generating some EMS revenues from those transports, but it would be really hard to kind of pull those numbers out to know exactly how much of our EMS revenues are coming from the township.
But Ed mentioned about they could go in the general fund. Is that our?
They can, yeah, they can.
They just not to.
Well, you know, you don't have to do it for that, right? I mean, historically, that's been a problem for firing EMS when you're servicing the townships, is that they they tend to want to stop at that level. And that's it. We've done our bit. Now, I'm I'm not criticizing the chief at all. I appreciate everything she's done. And these people, and we're gonna be building houses out there.
Yeah.
But it just probably won't go anywhere. But uh going forward, you know, we the council just needs to follow that when they're talking limited levy, that's very true. They have limited levy. But that doesn't mean they can't put other money, okay? So if other, I mean, we we could end up, I don't know what the future is gonna be like. But as we develop out, you know, we could end up in a fire district. The chief alluded to that, I think, you know, over the long, which is even up everything between everybody.
Yeah, and I do want to clarify too, like this isn't specific to the city of Norwalk. I mean, cities all over the country are in the same agreements with the townships that are around them. Um and they're all paying kind of that max levy rate. The levy rate is slightly higher in Pope County because it is population-based. Um but this is not specific to to Norwalk and Lynn Township.
But I I think this agreement would be useful for them and us because we're gonna be building out there and acquiring that here.
I just trying to understand the mechanics of it and what options you would have. So you could have the option, say, we're just not gonna do it?
Yeah, it's there. The earnest is on them to secure those services.
Right.
So we could say we're not gonna renew this contract with the township and they would have to uh contract with somebody else. Um though we know that all of our partners around us are volunteers or staffed at a lower level, so much like we spoke with the city of coming, it'd be likely that we'd be going to those territories anyways. Um again, we are getting sixty thousand dollars right now from Lynn Township. Um we have talked um maybe just internally about, maybe there's an option for them to buy equipment or do different things to kind of to pay into the system. Um but we've just uh not got a lot of traction on the ways to make that work.
Not, I'm not advocating.
No, I understand.
One option you could say was say, well, here's our price. We don't care what your levy is. That's our price. And if you have to get more money than our levy will provide, you'd have to do it.
That that is an option.
Yeah, I just, and like I said, I'm not advocating. I'm just want to know what the options would be.
Um I have that in my data. I can't pull it off the top of my head right now. Um but I can get it to you.
Yeah, I I I don't have a problem with this agreement. Unusual situation we got there with us developing. Or we're coming in. But you know, going that going forward, I just want the council to have that in the back of their minds. Because we may have requests from other townships. We got a pretty good fire department.
Thank, thank you for explaining that. No, because I did not, I had no idea, that's.
Well, and to know also, um you know, I said, we were addressing these things when I first became the chief, so we did used to have twenty-five percent of Lee Township. And we had the city of Spring Hill. And so part of the direction from council at that time was to reduce our territory size so that we are staffing appropriately for um for our city and not for outside of corporate. So that was kind of the first move was to um we didn't renew the contract with the city of Spring Hill and with the twenty-five percent that we had in Lee Township. So currently, all that we have left is the city of coming and Lynn Township, aside from corporate.
I'd make the motion.
What if we um what if we did lots of the time span and have them kind of?
I did a two-year on this. Yeah, I did a two-year contract. I think that we've done longer contracts in the past. And so um because uh because I know there's conversations also happening at the county level when it comes to EMS essential service and districting and stuff, um I went with a two-year contract instead of three-year or longer. Um but I'm happy to reduce that to one. I'm not sure how much we can get done in twelve months.
The agreements, the way that I read it is we have an out clause if we want to get out.
It's like anything else, right, Jim?
I think you can still, if for some reason it came up to exit early. But I've got to tell you, from our experience in doing negotiation and the especially on this topic, pretty soon, a year is gone and.
Yeah, I'm not sure we would get anything done.
It takes a while.
Uh another diff- a difficulty that we see with townships is that they really don't even hardly have any leadership. It's not like going to city, not like going to coming or Martinsdale where they actually have a a city council and a mayor that meet regularly. I mean, these are township trustees that kind of say, okay, who's gonna do it this year and someone raises their hand and and they don't have any duties except for signing some budget documents that the county puts together for them.
Well, we're trying to minimize the negatives.
Yeah.
Right, right. Well, I think there's a desire there to use our our fire department partly by way of the location, partly because the quality of service. And I think, you know, going forward, with myself, I I would want to approve this, right? Uh because that's gonna be part of the city before long anyway. There it is.
So they never resolved that at the state level, so they had each county was doing some kind of E- EMS vote. I don't, some of them failed.
Yeah, that's been on the legislature for a couple of years. Oh, there may be thirteen now.
That were proposing to do it.
It's very slow-moving, you know, because it's gonna take raising taxes and that's something that a lot of people don't want to do right now. Um so.
It's been a long discussion for a few years.
Yeah, it really has.
And it's gonna take some local city departments to say the vote didn't pass, so we're gonna stop providing the service. And it's so unfortunate, but some bad things probably have to happen to get people to the point where they say, oh, this is a valuable service. Oh, we do need to pay more to get that to level service.
Well, this is gonna reverberate back to the state like everything else where if you keep cutting our revenues.
Right.
Bad things are gonna happen. And it kind of puts the county in the spot because really, I I think it's kind of up to the county to go. And they're under the same problem, same section we have.
Yeah.
I, yeah, and I've had multiple conversations with the county board supervisors regarding this um in particular and bringing it to their attention that the cities are subsidized, no services in the townships. So they are aware, um they they are considering the EMS essential service, like they are researching it. I don't think that it's close to being through, but conversations have been happening um since the implementation of the last contract, so. Um again, I I think that with five supervisors especially, I think that we'll continue to see some work done there.
I I want to reinforce that point that it's, it's not that we don't want to provide the service of these areas, it's our citizens, we need to understand the impact on them. And we want to be equitable. It's the same conversation we have with coming. It's not fair to our citizens to provide a greatly subsidized service elsewhere.
While those people complain, hey, we don't pay as many taxes as you. Well, but the other fact of the matter is that some of them are gonna be our citizens here, sure. Over time, probably most, most of, well, you know. Any other questions for the chief at all? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Alright, good job.
Second.
And a second, so I have a motion.
You started two earlier, but I.
Yeah.
I was doing quick motions tonight, if you noticed. I finally got interrupted, so that happens.
Okay, so motion by Miniki and seconded by Brown and can I uh have a roll call?
Council member Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Miniki?
Yes.
Alright, very good. That passed.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing if you don't mind. Um I forgot to mention. Um so previously, we also did have a contract with Northern Warren. Um fire department that was structured very similarly to Martinsdale. Um because we felt like we were providing them an excessive amount of mutual aid. Um and through conversations uh with their chiefs and they've talked with their trustees, they are providing staffing in-house now. And their utilization with us has dropped down to less than one percent. Um so, yeah, so I think that's great, uh providing the. Um, so, yeah, so I think that's great, uh, providing the services to their own citizens and it truly has become reciprocal now. Where we're utilizing them for mutual aid and they're utilizing us, but very infrequently. Um, so if it is, uh, okay with the council, I would like to not renew that contract with them. They will fall under the mutual aid agreement with the Warren County agencies. We have, uh, a Warren County, uh, agreement instead. And then we will no longer be kind of exchanging that fee with them. Uh, it's taking more staff time, quite honestly, to vet those calls and to bill them for two hundred and fifty dollars a quarter, uh, if that.
Are you looking for a heads down here? Because otherwise we probably wouldn't be able to do it without them.
Right.
I think generally, yes, she's looking for direction. In other words, if you don't like that idea, we probably need to put some on.
Okay, very good. But I'm going to let that one terminate then.
I'm good with it too.
Great, thank you.
Okay, future agenda item. Purpose of this is for any council member to give, uh, directions to staff by way of a motion. Have items placed on a future agenda, this is not a discussion of the merits of subjects. Does anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to string up now? All right, we're good.
I, I don't know where exactly this fits, but, um, I don't think any tax legislation was passed this year. I mean, there was something on the tape.
There was a lot.
Well, there was this, and then it was back to the drawing board, and then there was this, and then it was back through the drawing board, and then it was this. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. I don't know where a conversation about. If it's necessary, like whatever was left. On the drawing board, is it even worth time talking about exactly what that is, the implications might be?
I will, the Iowa League of Cities Legislative Committee are having those exact discussions. To figure out how and when to reinvigorate. Whatever negotiations needs to take place with the state. From what I know at this point is there's been enough inner turmoil within the Republican Party at the end of the session. That it's a little less clear to us now who we would go to to have some of those discussions. It's a little bit fragmented. Now, we do.
Fragmented in terms of like what they think they should be doing related to tax.
Or, or who the, who the leaders are. That's even tough. The people that were leading the drive for some of the property tax legislation. The end of the session didn't work out the best and so some of the trust in that person that was putting together. I, I barely can scratch the surface enough understanding all the dynamics of what's happening. I'm just saying that it's not as clear as it was in the past. That this is the senator that we go to and this is the representative that we can go to to start the discussions. And then they work with our caucus to make something happen. It's less clear today who those people are.
A good idea to later on, some advice maybe from our rep and.
Yeah, I guess I wondered about something public, really public, that multiple cities would be doing. With a relatively similar agenda, talking about the implications, the real life implications of tax changes for their cities. And public, um. You know, for multiple reasons, uh, to remind our own citizens of what the implications are. And also the fact that things do cost money. You know, I, I know they, I know they know that, but it's so abstract to everyone. And if, if multiple cities. Had a very similar, very public agenda. I wonder if that would be helpful for the cause. You know, and I don't, I don't know if the city council meeting is the right place to do that, but what I like about that is it's live streamed. It's recorded, it's, anyone can get on it. And if all these places around were having a very similar organized. City councils having this specific conversation around this specific time, again, I.
Maybe that'd be a good thing for the mayor to visit with the other mayor's vows.
And I'm, I'm just looking for it to be helpful. I don't know if that will be helpful.
I think at the minimum, you're in the right direction, but what everything is reverted to is we are now in the second year. Of the prior rules, which will further ratchet, ratchet us down.
Right now, we know, yeah, so we can talk about that.
We need to refresh and dust off. What our game plan was last year, because we've been scampering around.
Well, would this be a work, would this be a work session topic maybe?
What, but what I would suggest as a, as a next step for that, I. The options are endless.
Yeah.
What I suggest as an option is. I could reach out to Representative Bet. And just do a little debriefing on the session and bring up this topic of what would be our next best step. To either communicate with her, Senator Barrett, who do we go to to, to kind of take some next steps down this path? That's just one source. The other one would be our Iowa League of Cities, the Legislative Committee to get their advice on what would be a good direction to go.
Yeah.
I could bring that back.
Yeah, whatever.
That might even be a good admin policy work group. Maybe a way to vet some of that out.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Sound good?
Yeah, I just like something public. And I like something public about, which makes it clear to people like. These are the implications and here's, here is who's deciding that these are the implications.
I know from talking with the other members of the office management board, that they've got similar feelings.
Yeah.
Those are reps from all the communities and federal.
And, you know, I think, I think they are representing some people who are really displeased with their taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got a lot of friends that are not particularly displeased with their taxes. It's not a big focus for them. They don't think about it. They, they understand that that's what's required. To. Have all the good stuff we have.
Part of the context that's blown up the way it's good, was when the reevaluation came out.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And people don't understand.
Jumped a bunch, right?
That's why they're paying more.
And I think that kind of get some of them scared, afraid. And so they felt like they absolutely needed to do something and.
Who else is scared when you're found out you're going to be paying the same as commercial on your residence?
Well, see, but, but what they failed to realize is that we can adjust the level of levy. As, as a city, the school can do the same thing, the county board can do the same thing, if they would let the local government do it. But they felt they needed to talk. Anyway, we are what we are.
Yeah.
But I think that's why that happened. I think they were scared. You know, both sides of the aisle.
Well, the, the main takeaway that I have or kind of what, what you're requesting is direction. Is on a, on a future agenda to publicly have these discussions about that state legislation.
Yeah. They, they've created a huge, and we, I mean, no one knows, but let's be, they create a huge problem for us. In terms of taking care of future liabilities for the well-being of our city. We didn't have a problem, I mean. They created.
We're lucky it didn't get worse. It fell through the cracks and now we're going back to what we thought was as bad as it got.
Yeah.
Last year's legislation. Yeah, that's almost scary when you think, oh, that's good news.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it became evident last part of the legislation. That there are a lot of small towns representatives. That do not like their, the way their own cities where they live were handling everything. And that's why they were put the clamp down. I don't really think that's the seat of rapids, the Iowa cities, Norwalks, Indianalls, five of them.
Well, see, there are still more rural legislators in your.
Absolutely, and that is, I think, abundantly clear with veto.
Don't they just only have some kind of working groups in the off-season, lack of better words?
You know, you would think that would make sense to do a study committee. And I, I discussed that with, uh, when, when we went around on that, you know?
They don't.
They don't really want your input yet.
No, they certainly don't.
You know, among themselves.
They, they don't want.
They spend their summer.
City's input on what's.
No, and, you know, you would think that would be the case. You'd think, okay, they got some time now. Give you Democrats, be Republicans, you know, governors, representatives, go listen to some people.
They don't have to listen to us, just listen to each other. You'd think they'd have a little group. That would get together to leadership, I guess, lack of better words, to certain thing. That would, here's our game plan going into the next session. As opposed to just going in willy-nilly.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what they do, but I don't know.
That's a party thing.
I thought they used to do that. I swear they used to do this. I, they would get together and do stuff like that. Certain ones would be appointed to different places and they'd do some studying, you know, and reach out to people, uh, like they should, but I'm just saying they get kind of. Get back together and have your little group and go, what are we going to do?
Yeah.
Figure out something.
Yeah, a little strategy.
Yeah, I didn't, I, you know, sorry for taking.
That explains a lot of things, because they're, they're doing that during the session, apparently.
Yeah, I think that's a good observation.
Yeah.
Okay, now we've tried to cancel inquiries and staff updates.
We can do a little recon with, um, our representative, get together with our.
We need to freshen up on, I forgot to have what. The rules were last year.
What they were proposed as?
No, I mean, what? Where we're at, lived at and where we're at right now. We talked about so many hyperbole and hypotheticals.
Oh.
We need to get back to what actually is the law right now. How it will affect finance, CIT, all that.
We could, um, that is actually a relatively simple explanation that we could provide to.
We like so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, time for council inquiries and staff updates. I'd like to remind everyone that this portion of the meeting is much less formal. You may hear some back and forth banter and general joking around. We believe that this can build camaraderie and cohesiveness between the staff and the council. Uh, okay, let's go around, Jim. Got any, uh?
No.
No, he got nothing, all right.
Nothing.
Hey, I did, and I'd be sitting in that room, can I talk? Anyway, uh, yesterday was my fifty-third, what? And yeah, we made, a lot of people. George and I had a good time playing the chamber tournament.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun. And, uh, well, you know, we posted a scorecard. It wasn't fourteen under, so. But we did all right. Oh, all right.
I have been really pleasantly surprised with how well, um, the city, my neighborhood. It sounds like whole city, uh, is accepted this, uh, non-watering irrigation.
Yeah.
I've been impressed. I did not.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I bet our public works director probably has thoughts on that too. But, yeah, I agree. I, I think it, it was well-accepted and appears so far it's been working. We just need more.
Nothing free tonight.
We'll have the over and under on.
As Councilmember Baker said, the response has been great from Norwalk and the metro. On the irrigation, we've had a few people still irrigating. We've notified people. Uh, they're given forty-eight hours to cease irrigation. And we've had a few people still continuing to irrigate. I'm a little concerned with the forecast that we may have more people choosing to irrigate if we don't act on the ones that are doing so now. For our code, we have approved code ordinance says we notify them, they have forty-eight hours to stop irrigating. At that point, if they continue, we can shut off their water. They pay a fine to have the water turned back on. This is our house water. We turn off and we're stopped.
So everything shut off in the home?
Correct. I know we can't, you know, have a vote on there, but I just wanted some discussion, short conversation from council on your thoughts on proceeding with the code. And shutting off water, or do we take another, add another step in there and ask people? The one. One thing we thought about was adding a la- layer in there where we can put a notice on their door to say, you're scheduled for water shut. Do you do your continued irrigation? You're scheduled for a water shut-off tomorrow unless you call city hall and speak to this person. Or, you know, somehow reach out to us and then you need to say, state your compliance with the code. Somehow acknowledge that you're going to follow it, otherwise we'll shut them off. There's something we can do in the middle there, um, just farm thoughts, conversation on that.
Well, you talked to an old team chief. So probably what I would say. I, where I see it, is that, you know, as long as we provide a legal note. Uh, I'm sure the, the burning council probably would have some thoughts on this. But I remember we used to post, uh, on the door of the residence. Or we had to send a certified mail. It was easier to post on the door. But, uh, whatever, but I, I'd be for toe in the line. You know?
If you're given a reason like Nusad, it's going to die if I don't.
Nusad is allowed to continue to irrigate. Um, today we had one homeowner said, well, we've, we've made efforts to reduce it. Ironically, they said they reduced their irrigation to five hours a day, two to seven, um.
Pretty good sacrifice there.
Yeah. Uh, we've had a homeowner who notified twice their home, we've given the notice and they continue to irrigate, no, no information given back. But I'm afraid if we don't take action, people are going to see that there's no recourse. If there's no recourse, why won't other people do it? Why should they suffer when other people have that advantage to irrigate?
I agree, and sooner the better.
I'm with that total line.
Letter in the door.
Sure, whatever you think would work best. I mean, I, you guys. You know, I think you got to notify them.
I think they've already been notified.
Yep, we're following the code. Okay, thank you, that's it.
I have nothing further, thank you.
That's it?
That's it. I took enough of your time.
Thanks for all those agreements.
You're welcome, thank you.
Another chief.
Last week, um, the Services Division of the Police Department. Uh, two S R's, Officer Chriswell and Dunlap, Sergeant Reed and Officer Haller. Worked with, um, a group of people mostly focused on a Christian church, um, who helped. Um, non-native English speakers speak English and their families. Uh, together, they hosted a picnic for police and, um. The English language learner community of our community at Philly Phillips Park. And it was just a great time, about forty, fifty people were there, um, had a good time. Um, hanging out with the belts from other countries and hanging out with their kids, so that all worked well, so great job. Out of our officers for doing that. Uh, Sunday, there was a bike race, um. A, two bike races, um. Um, starting and ending at the high school, big problems associated with that. Um, the bike director, race director was very complimentary of, of the council and the city for allowing it. And providing the, uh, barricades and no parking signs, uh, that Public Works put out, so. Lots of kudos from the riders who came from Chicago, Illinois, Chicago, Ivesley, Minnesota, Wichita, Kansas. Who came from all over the Midwest to, to do that race and lots of compliments about the whole thing, so.
All right, well, thanks, chief, I appreciate it. Sounds pretty good. Let's see, Carrie, I didn't mean to overlook you here, but I understand you're online. Do you have any, any comments?
Hey, Ed, uh, no, other than we today attended orientation at ISU for my second. Son, so we're pretty excited about that, but otherwise I don't have anything for the meeting.
All right, well, that's great.
Take the great school.
I, I understand it, it's one of those quality schools. There are a lot of good land-grant universities out there and that's one of them. Lincoln's not bad. Let's see now, is anybody else that's online?
Got a heck of a football team out there.
Park and Rec.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, uh, real quick, the month of July is Parks and Recreation Month, uh, so online, uh, on the city webpage. We have a calendar with a bunch of different events throughout all the different parks, uh, we've got a bunch of different. Uh, we've got a bunch of different camps for kids. We partnered with Shields for a couple of different prizes. You go around to hit all your different spots. You get a stamp at the end of the month. Uh, we get, you know, some sort of little prize from uh, Shields. A bunch of bags, tournaments, pickleball, dodgeball, uh, outdoor games, fishing, a whole bunch of different things, if anyone's interested on that. It's online. That's all I have.
Well, thanks. Sounds like a bang-up deal. Wow. Library.
We, like Parks and Rec, are very busy because the kids are out of school and I had kind of an interesting uh, story to tell. I wanted to thank uh, the council for approving the liquor license for our nineties after-hours party for adults. We ended up having some interesting, um, folks come to that. They were traveling to Des Moines. They thought that they had bought tickets to see Hamilton in Des Moines. Turns out they bought the tickets for somewhere else. Um, and so they were already in Des Moines. They went to the Catch Des Moines site, which the council also approved, uh, the Economic Development Department's. Uh, moving forward with that, they checked on Catch Des Moines, saw our nineties party, thought it sounded like a good time. They came down and had a blast. So that is already, um.
All right.
By getting people down here, they found out about Norwalk, thought it was delightful and really appreciated the opportunity since they missed out on their Hamilton.
Well, you know, it's probably pretty comparative.
It was very close, I'm sure. I think for nineties, you know. So that's all. Come see us.
Well, thanks for, uh, thanks for being out there too for the golf.
Oh, sure. Thank you for listening to our spiel. Yeah, we had a, a very productive time. It was a good time for us too.
And that was the only contest out there that I got ten thousand points.
Excellent.
You didn't count your scorecard, Ed.
Uh, be for the clerk, right?
Yeah, uh, just no meeting July third, so don't, don't come here.
That's a good point. If, if you come here, you'll be alone.
Is there, will it be both phones or me?
No.
Yep, just not gonna do it.
Yeah, so I just have a confession to make. Uh, I was on a meeting, uh, in, in a Tumon and I got a call from Ed and said. Um, well, we're teeing off right now. And at the golf tournament, which I had agreed to play in. And I forgot to notify.
Make, make sure that goes in his personal.
That I had a. That I had a meeting to go to. And uh, you know, if there's ever a time that you, you feel bad about not playing golf, that, that. Like the first ever. So. I, I, I do have a feeling the team would have done considerably better had I, had I been available.
We felt that way too. But. I want you to know that George and I still have a good time.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it and we don't hold it dry. Well, George might.
Now, there's a bar tab in your name, but.
I tell you what, that should have happened.
Jason, I was a half inch from a hole one. Are you really?
On the short one?
It was awesome.
One thirty-six, yeah. Hit the flag and I heard it and I said, Ed, I think I hit the pin. I looked up, it's not in the hole, but it's real close. We're gonna, it's right on the edge. Yeah.
Water, that would have been about, uh. No.
It'd have been seventeen.
Seventeen.
Glorious moment for the.
That's cool. That's exciting. And I sucked this putt, it was more than twelve, it was more than twelve feet, but.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
There it is.
Anyway, we'll have other opportunities, I'm sure, Brown.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, the closing comments here, let's see, uh, make you aware. They, you know, the uh, the home show will be held somewhere in twenty twenty-six. And my understanding is that, you know, we're, we're looking pretty good as this goes into consideration by that. And the board will be making the announcement. Probably July fifteenth or somewhere. And we'll find out whether or not we're hosting home show next. I think that's already contemplated in the budget, it's not optimistic, optimistic. And we'll see what happens, it sounded good. And you already heard about the no meeting July third. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn and find a second? Right, so council member Brown gave us the motion. He did, he didn't dink her out, did he? And then councilman Baker gave us the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.